Okay, so I we've got everybody here, so maybe we should officially start the meeting. Okay, I'm going to start once again with the the information about virtual meetings. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 offer, a order suspending certain provisions of open meeting law and imposing strict limitations of the number of people that may gather in one place. We're holding this meeting remotely and encourage participation to the great extent possible. Specific information and guidelines for participation can be found on the Shrewsbury Media website. And the members of that's members can listen or watch meeting by visiting the Shrewsbury Media Connection. No in-person attendance of members will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. And in the event that we're unable to do so, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript rather comprehensive records. And given that the selectmen are meeting tonight, I would assume then that we probably are going to be, we they're going to, people are going to find us by the recording for the most part. Yeah, okay, rather than television. All right, so I'm calling the meeting to order. And the first item is to review and act to approve the Minister of February 23rd meeting. Once again, Lisa, you did a great job with the minutes. Thank you much. Can I have a motion to approve? Or anybody see anything that needs correction?
So moved.
Okay, I need to do a roll call vote. So yes or no, Dean?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So passes unanimously. The next is to review and act to approve the report of the director's activities in February of this year. Once again, a whole lot of virtual meetings, Priya.
Yes, staying busy.
And you know, I noticed that you're starting to work with your staff. I'm setting their goals and that'll be relevant to something later on in the meeting. The calendar, yeah.
No, that, I mean, what we are going to be discussing is my goals. That would be different.
Oh, I thought I had seen that you were discussing it with your staff, their goals. Okay, I'm sorry about that.
This is goal settings that I have to do with the managers. You know, I told you about the performance assessment that the town is implementing. And the first step is talking in one-on-one with, I would discuss with each of the managers. And we set goals for the year and then they have one-on-one meetings with their team members. So we've done that process in February. Each of us has.
That's what I was referring to. Okay.
Yes. Yeah. So the and I've shared all those with the town. Yeah, if you make a copy, I can send it to all of you later, but I don't have them.
That's fine. Don't even know.
Yeah.
So if I understand correctly, all of the meetings that you had in the goal setting that they did with it, you've now sent all that to the town?
Yes, yes, I had to compile all of the, you know, we had to come up with three goals that we discussed with each other. And then I compiled all of them for all the full-time staff and the part-time staff who are working at least 19 hours. And I had to share those with the town.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna do the roll call again. Dean?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
April? Nancy?
Yes.
And Lisa?
Yes.
And me, I also approved. So unanimously approved. Next item is programs and services. We have a report on what's happened in February.
So had actually included those along with the activities. As as you can see, we've had lots of virtual programs for kids, teens and adults. And in March, we've we are having ongoing programs, a lot of fun, fun stuff. We have a literary March Madness, which is online voting for, you know, where we paired two titles of books from various genres. And people have to vote for them, vote for one of them, and we keep doing the bracket like the past.
How's it going?
Very well, very well. I think we have one more week of that. And then we have the seed lending library that just started yesterday. And, you know, we used to have the seeds in the library and people could come and pick 10 packets of those seeds. We thought that was work, putting all those packets together because we have about 80 varieties of seeds. This year, in addition to getting all that stuff ready, they've created a website that is linked to our main website where people can request 10 packets. It's like submitting their requests and then we have to get all those packets ready and then put it on the whole shelf along with the books so people can come and pick them up. So it's been a lot of involved work.
A lot of work.
From my reference librarian Suzanne and Diana, the children's librarian have worked together on this. And I think, I mean, they started this yesterday and today I noticed that Diana had posted on Facebook that quite a few requests have already been submitted and people are like, when are we going to get our seed packets? So it's going to be, it's it's a labor of love.
And what spring, get out there and start digging.
You need some high school volunteers.
Yeah.
Saturday's session, which we have a Shrewsbury UK Library and I had to say they were so excited at the idea about a seed life. Very interesting.
Yes.
You're getting international recognition.
Yes, and so many of our programs and services that we showed through the video too was kind, you know, unique. And they were pretty surprised to see our, you know, excited to see the automated handling system and all of that.
They want one.
Yes, it was a great collaborative program. It was Mike's brainchild. And it worked well.
It was fun. Okay, so actually Mike is with us tonight. We're going to welcome Mike. And he, next thing we have on our agenda is a new website. He's going to tell us about it.
Well, hello everybody. So, so as of right now, well, I'll backtrack a little bit. I'm not sure how much Priya has told you, but but originally my goal had been to have the new website basically up and running and launched before I moved on from the role of electronic resources librarian. Obviously, that didn't happen. COVID kind of interrupted everything. And then the fact that we kind of had multiple turnovers with the the new electronic resources librarian slowed things down a little bit more. But we're back on track now. So as of right now, where we stand, the new electronic resources librarian is working on putting together kind of a a draft website while in the meantime, our technology specialist Ariel has been reaching out to a number of branding consultants. I'm not sure if Priya has mentioned this too, but the we basically thought it would be a good idea to bundle a a library-wide rebrand in with with the website. So so right now she's been reaching out to get quotes and project structures from, I think there were about six different branding consultants, including the ones who did the Worcester Public Library, the ones who did the Massachusetts Library Association. One of the folks, one of the groups that's working on the Mass Board of Library Commissioners rebrand. So we've collected all those proposals and we actually have a meeting scheduled for Thursday where those of us in the committee to redesign the website are going to get together and just kind of talk over. We've all been looking at the the proposals ahead of time and we'll just kind of talk over what we think and you know, compare prices and see what what the best plan is for going forward. Most of them seem like they're they're between a month or two to do the branding project. It seems like if if we are insistent upon moving a little bit faster, which we will be because I want to, I want to get us back on my projected timetable. I'm hoping to have the the rebrand project at least wrapped up end of April, beginning of May, at which point we'll start incorporating that into the build of the website. So right now the website itself is is a lot of it's just placeholder, you know, we're building the structure and we'll populate the content after the fact. So once we've got the rebrand done, we'll be able to start integrating that more into the actual build of the website. At that point, we're planning on doing.
Interrupt something just for a second here. I don't actually understand what we get out of a rebrand. I mean, we're the Shrewsbury Public Library still. Is it our logo is different or is the look of the pages, what is exactly comes out of a rebranding?
Sure. So the the goal of that is to the get a new logo. I mean, that is part of it, but also to get just unified imagery, color, text that we can use for advertising promotions, you know, web stuff going forward, just to keep, because at this point, really, I mean, we've we've had a logo that that our our old young adult librarian Dan Barber created a couple of years ago, just on his own. And we've had sort of unspoken style guides that we've all used. But because so many different stat, like the children's library, kind of the children's librarians kind of do their own promotions, adult services does their own promotions, we haven't really had a unified style guide, basically. This this would give us a chance to just kind of bring all of our our branding together so that we've got a more visually consistent look and style with everything that we're putting forward.
So the consultant will talk to us and we will share the vision for the library, what what we want people to know as soon as they see the Shrewsbury Public Library website and our print promotional materials. And they'll talk to managers, the different departments and the various stock. We'll share the services that we provide and I think they'll be able to advise and guide us on that. We might still use our stained glass window because we all love that. That might still be incorporated, but it's good to get a, you know, perspective of an outsider to get this unified brand for the library.
Yeah, and and a nice thing is too that because we've just opened a new building, a lot of the kind of color work will have been done already because presumably you want your your electronic and your print advertising to kind of match the color scheme that you're using for your facility itself. So we'll be able to save a little bit of money and time by not having to incorporate, you know, it's already done. So does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. In what ways will this new website be different than the existing one on the that we operate side of the town webpage?
Sure. My primary goal on getting us away from the town website, it's I I like the town website. I think it's a really good municipal website. But the structure of it is just not conducive to the ways that like a library needs to promote its services and programs. Like if you if you look at a lot of other library websites, which, you know, we we did when we were planning this project, they they tend to have a lot more of a dynamic structure to them. Because for a library, you're you're swapping out content a lot. You want to advertise new programs. You want to advertise new services. You want to advertise new materials. So we need a website that is a little more fluid to work with. Having having been the electronic resources librarian and having been primarily responsible for our our portion of the old website, it's just not very flexible. It's it's fairly rigid. And when we have a lot of content that we need to promote at once, it just, it gets very cluttered and crowded and looks messy.
I just want to chime in here. Our website is not user-friendly at all. Yeah. I can't tell you how many times I have looked for something that I know is there and I can't find it. And, you know, as Mike said, when you look at other libraries' websites, they they're much easier to navigate. You can find what you're looking for quickly. And in my opinion, this is so long overdue. I'm I'm thrilled that we're finally, finally moving forward with this. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
And we keep adding content to our website too. We have, especially this past year, we've added so much content and like Nancy said, it's difficult to find, even even for us. So.
You know, when I go to the town website now, I go right down to the site map at the bottom to find anything. That's a crazy way to have to navigate.
Yeah, yeah, there's just not a, there's not a good, and and, you know, I I've been very cognizant of of all these issues since we moved to Civic Plus. Just, you know, with the move to the new building and everything that went along with that, it it kind of kept getting backburnered. But it was always something that was on my mind. And, you know, having worked with Civic Plus for a while, there's just not a good way to, we tried shifting things around and moving menus and it's it's just not conducive to the kind of simple, straightforward interface that you need for a library website. And one of the reasons that we went with the vendor, with our web vendor now, Inflox, is that it's just very simple, you know, it's it's not, it's not flashy or fancy, but it's very straightforward. It's very visually easy to parse. It just, it to me, that's feels like what a library website is. It's not necessarily like all these visual flourishes. It's just simple, straightforward information. You can find what you need fairly easily.
And I think welcoming, you know, I think that's something about the civic site is it's just very, you know, very straightforward. Where I think, you know, we're we're pulling people in as a as a resource and a community hub. So I think having that, you know, dynamic flow and just user-friendly is going to be fabulous. So thank you.
Who's going to be the webmaster's?
Well, right now, it's it's the the folks who are primarily working on it are are the electronic resources librarian, James Pearlman, and the technology specialist Ariel Sorensen. I will probably be involved when I can be. It's it's been kind of my pet project. But as time goes by, the programming is pulling me more and more away from that. But I'll I'll be there to keep tabs on things.
And our goal is to get this ready by June, by the end of this fiscal year.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, so that's that was the in May, hoping early May that we'll be able to start doing some some kind of curated focus groups with with people that we know that we have some connections with to go through the website. Once, you know, once the branding is done and we're able to kind of set things up a little bit better and more consistently have some of the some folks that we we know go through, who are not librarians, go through and kind of test things out, you know, we'll put them through some tests, basically. Not tests for them, but tests for the website to see if it's, if it actually is as user-friendly and workable as as it as we think it is. And depending on, you know, the results that we get from that, we'll probably change and shift things around. And like Priya said, my my goal, fingers crossed, no, no crises arise in the meantime. But the goal is to launch by the end of the the fiscal year.
Something to look forward to.
Yeah.
Be sure to include some of those young adults in your focus groups.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
They're they're the really smart ones when it comes to technology.
The the goal when we assemble the focus groups, we've been kind of asking around, we we want to get a mix of of seniors, of teens, of, you know, families of of kids and just get everybody, you know, put them through the paces. You know, can they find the things that they want to find? And if not, why not?
We'll include Nancy also.
I would hope a few of our trustees will be involved in that.
My teens will do it too. You need them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, well, we'll look forward to seeing this, Mike. Good luck.
Thanks, thanks.
Let us know if there's anything you need from us, okay?
Sure, definitely, definitely. Like I said, in in probably about a month, I'll need some of you for a focus group.
We're not too busy these days. All right. Well, thanks very much. Any other questions for Mike or?
Mike, you're working on the the search engine or the is the search engine going to change from old to new?
The the.
Let's say you're looking for a book in the library or in the CW Mars system.
So the the search engine is actually going to be, that's that's actually kind of built into the website. It came with the Inflox template and it's going to have often double check, but last time I checked, unless we've changed something, it's going to basically have a toggle on it. So it'll be like the search bar that's on the website now, but you can toggle it. Do you want to search the website or do you want to search the the catalog, the library catalog? And you can switch that, you know, back and forth. There's not, because because the evergreen search engine is run by CW Mars, there's not really anything we can, we can do about that.
We just link right into that.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay. I am on, I am on the CW Mars Development Committee though, so we are always working on the the search engine from there. And that's that's whenever whenever we can vote on where to put money, that's that's where my vote always goes to improving the search engine.
That's a good.
And they are constantly working on that too, to search features.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
When, anything else for Mike? Um, Mike, you don't have to hang around if you don't want to. Of course, you're very welcome to hang around if you would like to.
Sure, sure, I can hang around. I I had heard somebody wanted to ask me about the New England Library Association. I'm happy to chime in about that if anybody has any questions.
Is that, we don't actually have anything on the agenda about that. Do you want to tell us about it?
I, well, I have a question too. Is there going to be an in-person conference in what October, right, is usually when it is?
Yeah, that is a very, very good question. Yeah, so for anybody who doesn't know, I'm actually currently the president of the New England Library Association. As as usual, I picked the best year to jump on board with something like that. So, yeah, that's a really good question. We, I had a conference committee meeting last Friday, so like four days ago. Our our conference committee chair really, really wants that. We're really back and forth on it right now. So where things stand right now is we're going to do at least three days of a a virtual conference. And then the fourth day, it is in October. I can't remember the date off the top of my head. The the fourth day, we are very tentatively planning on having an in-person event using the Function Hall at the College of the Holy Cross. So right now, their capacity or their their projected capacity limits for June are 100 people for the Function Hall, which is about five times less than what we usually get at a at a New England Library Association conference. So it's going to be a little questionable on if we can actually make money by running that. Because that's 100 people counting the people that we need to have on site to run the event itself. So the I I was a little concerned that in order to break even and, you know, to make a little bit of money because the conference is usually one of our our biggest money-making items of the year. We'd have to charge people, you know, too much. But we're, you know, we're trying to crunch the numbers, see if we can make it work, if we can get some more vendor support. That should be viable, assuming, you know, the the projections with COVID keep to keep improving, then it should be, it should be viable. Does anybody have any questions about the New England Library Association? And I don't know if I would assume.
Nope.
It advocates for for libraries and programs and you guys like share information?
Yeah, it's it's, yeah, it's a set like every every state, the American Library Association is basically broken up into all the state library associations. So there's like, you know, the Massachusetts Library Association, Rhode Island Library Association. The New England Library Association is not necessarily in control of the six New England states, but it it kind of functions as like a like a soft parent unit for the for the six states. You know, we'll collaborate with them on different activities sometimes and we'll often, you know, share members and, you know, people get a discount if they're involved with multiple, you know, groups within the the region. But, yeah, we just try to plan programming and assist libraries in the entirety of of New England.
It's nice to hear that you're so active in it. Thank you much.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, it's a good fun year for it.
Like none other.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, I think we'll move on to our next, which is financial and legislative. And we, Priya sent us the information for the year-to-date report. Looks like we're right on track. Anything you have concern there or?
No, I think we are on track. Materials budget is what we pay more attention to, and I think we are doing well with that.
Okay, and and that just jogged my mind to remind everybody, we have a meeting with the finance committee scheduled. Did everybody get the Zoom link for that?
Been changed.
It's yeah. And then you will be able to update us with the actual time you need to sign. We don't have to start at 6 o'clock, do we?
I, yeah, I, yeah, the library is scheduled to do a presentation at 8:35.
8:35, okay.
On April 8.
April 8.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Before that, Claire, just one thing that I wanted to mention. The town manager, of course, communicated that this finance committee will reschedule their budget hearings. And they, he is also planning another meeting with the each department head to revisit fiscal projection one, and he will be scheduling meetings with department heads this week. I think today he's of course busy with the Board of Selectmen meeting and they're going to vote to authorize the override ballot question and then he's going to schedule this meeting again. I hope there aren't any changes that he's projecting to our budget, but I'll keep you informed.
Be that be tough to, he'll have to have two budgets, so whether or not it passes budget and we want it doesn't.
Exactly.
Wow, is that why? Is that why you're revisiting?
Indeed, I think that is why he is visiting, yes. But again, I hope the library's budget, I mean, the one that he, what he had proposed earlier, I hope he doesn't make any more reductions.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and the next thing is we have to accept the vote, accept or not accept the fiscal year 2022 service calendar. It looked pretty much like calendar normally does, coincident with town holidays and whatever in there.
Exactly.
Anybody see anything they want to talk about?
I had, I had one thing and maybe you can't do it, but I was looking at Thanksgiving and you're closing at 5 o'clock. And, you know, the schools get out at noon time of the day before. And I just wondered if the library couldn't close at noon time or 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock. 5 o'clock, when you have to cook dinner, then and do all that, would be nice if there was a little bit more time. And I don't know if we can do that or if it's up to the town that makes that decision or the town manager, rather.
In years past, we used to close at 5 on Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving. But this, I mean, in 2022. Um, the day before Thanksgiving, but this, um, I mean, in twenty twenty, they did uh close at noon. The day before. I think the Personnel Board has to declare that.
Oh, okay.
They will let us know. So this is our initial. Thing, we are basing this on past years.
Okay, well, I I hope it's noon time.
Otherwise, you'll have that flood of kids too.
No, because so many people. Oh, because so many kids were always out because people traveled the day before, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's right. I remember now they're off on Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they go Monday, Tuesday.
So you'll get them all Tuesday afternoon.
Okay, um, so can I have a motion to approve the service calendar?
So moved?
Okay, I'm gonna do the roll call. Dean?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so um unanimously approved. All right, then, um, you also sent us some very interesting statistics about ebook usage and expenses in the last five years. So usage is soaring.
Absolutely, yeah. At our last meeting, we had spoken about it, and I had just given you. Um, anecdotal kind of information, so I just pulled these stats. Um, as you can see, we have four um. Ebook platforms, Overdrive, Hoopla, Reading, and One Click. And uh, Overdrive is the one that we shared with um the consortium CW Mars. And you can see how the usage has uh gone up from fiscal year twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. And uh, keeping up with that, the expenses have also ma- are also matching that. Uh, and the other one is Hoopla. That's also that we keep adding more funding to.
How are those funded, Priya? Are they like, is it per checkout? Like, if more people are checking out ebooks, then does the library pay per?
Um, as far as Overdrive is concerned, we pay um CW Mars to purchase more copies of. Ebooks and e-audiobooks. There's also another thing called Overdrive Advantage. Where we purchase more copies of the titles, and they would be available to Shrewsbury Library Cardholders. Um, you know, they would get priority over um other library cardholders. So we keep adding. Uh, to that too. So we see the holds, uh requests, if a title has, you know. X number of holes, then we decide, oh, we need to add more copies. So we would. Um, we would spend that um on our own. That's Overdrive Advantage, and the other is the amount that we. Contribute to CW Mars for the overall uh collection.
So it's not per checkout, it's like for materials, just the way you'd put a book on the shelf.
Right, Overdrivers like that. Uh, Hoopla is by checkout, so uh. We can allow patrons to check out six titles a month. And then we see, oh, this, you know, we have been adding to that now. Right now, I think we have eight or ten, eight, Mike. Eight.
Uh, I I think we actually bumped it up to ten. I think we bumped it up to ten. We um. It it had been around six, but then because of the pandemic, because people weren't able to access the physical collection as much. We had put a lot more money into both Hoopla and and Overdrive.
Yeah, we made a conscious decision to increase our e-resources budget.
And the e-resources budget, is that that's part of the materials budget?
That is part of the material.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, that amount, as we went from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, that's a. Almost a, almost a three X increase there in that overdrive expense.
Yes.
Uh, and but I don't see a three X increase in in overdrive checkouts.
Um.
Just wondering.
The end of um. I think actually before the pandemic, we made that decision to increase uh spending on overdrive. Uh, we had a healthy balance in our materials budget, and we uh chose to spend more. Um, again, based on holds and uh usage, though it though it's not reflected like you. Uh, pointed out in this.
Mm-hmm.
Usage here, it's not three times more, but we observed the trend and increase in usage.
That was good timing.
Yes, and we have increased it this year too.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The um, the the hoop, the hoopla statistics have gone up about four times. They they've essentially.
Yeah, this is um, yeah, this is up to fiscal year twenty twenty.
Oh, okay, then.
What we have.
Okay, then, yeah, we'll we'll see that next year.
Okay, yes, okay, yeah.
Do you anticipate we're gonna have to maintain it at this level, or the usage will go down a little bit when the pandemic's over?
I think the usage of print materials and ebook, e-materials keeps going up. That's the trend uh we have seen, and that's, I think, what we should be anticipating. But we, of course, have to look at our budget and uh see how much we can afford, and we keep evaluating this constantly.
When I'm, can I jump in for a second, Priya?
Sure.
When um, when when we were um talking with the town manager about the library's budget, one of the things that I did is I went back and I pulled a lot of our. Usage statistics um all the way back to like two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when we had the the financial crisis. And there was a a massive spike in library usage. Uh, around two thousand eight, two thousand nine, you know, during during the crisis, and. As the economy stabilized a little bit more, those statistics did come down. But they never went back down to the level that they had been pre-two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So I I suspect. You know, assuming that things do stabilize in the next year or two, there will be a a somewhat of a decrease, but it won't go back, like, it'll still be. Well above what it was before.
Might level off a bit, and the rate of increase would go down, but. People form, people form new habits, right, and.
Yeah, exactly.
Stay with them, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not a bad thing.
Yeah.
They learn how to use the electronic resources.
Yeah, yeah, we got, we've gotten a lot of questions uh via telephone and via email about how to use. Um, our our ebook platforms, especially, you know, earlier on, when we first all went back to the building. That was a lot of what our reference phone calls were were about.
Okay, um, anything else on financial?
Uh, can I go back? Sorry, just real quick, I just wanna go back to uh meeting with the town manager. I get the feeling uh town money for our computer upgrades is probably not gonna happen again this year. We don't know yet, but.
That's the capital budget, right?
Right.
I'm optimistic that it will go through.
Oh, okay.
Let's see.
Good, good.
I mean, the discussion we had with him, the initial discussion was positive.
Good, good, okay.
But.
Glad to hear it. I was feeling pessimistic about it.
Um, what about the COVID relief bill? Like, some of that money is supposed to come to um states and cities and towns? So like, do you know if we're getting? Any of that, or if it would be earmarked for?
Um, we were um asked to pro- provide a budget, uh provide um. A list of uh stuff that we might need, COVID-related expenses. The all those plexiglass shields and all that, those were purchased with the CARES Act funding. Whether it was like facilities that was submitting those um, you know, expenses, or whether it was the library, it was COVID relief. Uh, funding that we got all those supplies from, um, all those materials from, and then all the. Um, supplies, disinfecting supplies, and, you know, sanitizing supplies and all that. So we have. Um, stored. Uh, we we have and we have gotten some from the town. Um, for that, for the next few months. And um, we, the town IT is going to provide. Um, six laptops. We had uh asked the town manager if he would approve funding for. Six laptops that we are planning to loan to patrons, a- and this is coming as part of the COVID relief funding.
Okay, I just wondered with the new, the new um stimulus. Package, if that would be another influx to the town.
I, that we don't know yet. We haven't heard and seen, heard from the town, yeah. Yes.
Cross our fingers. So let's move on to facilities, equipments, and grounds. Anything there, Priya?
Um, no, I don't have anything.
And how about gifts and grants? Anything there?
Gifts and grants, nothing new, no, no new updates.
Okay, so the next item is um personnel, and it's uh, is it uh, Priya sent us her goals, so. For the last meeting, we didn't discuss them at that time, and so let's have another look at them. Here, you wanna just briefly?
Um, sure, um, so I um divided the goals into categories, um, community relationships and outreach. Um, that's, you know, a constant goal of ours to um communicate with other. Um, agencies in town and promote our library services, seek community partnerships with. Schools, with um the Center Council on Aging, Parks and Rec, uh other organizations in town. Um, we are, uh, you know, fostering a culture of um. Community and um sharing. Uh, planning presentations on topics of diversity, culture, um, et cetera. And um, so that's community relationships and outreach, facility management, of course. Ensuring that the facility is in uh tip-top shape. And um collaborating with public facilities if anything needs to be done, being proactive about that. Um, Personnel Management, um, we have a lot of goal-setting. Uh, meetings uh for myself and for managers and other staff. Um, so we are constantly uh aware of um the action plan and the vision for the library, and we plan. Um, innovative services for uh the future. Uh, opportunities for professional development of staff. Uh, in this virtual environment, it's it's actually quite uh easy. We just don't have the time to attend all the conferences and. Webinars that are being offered uh by other state library agencies. Um, fiscal planning and management, of course, uh, I continue to advocate for funding for enhanced library services. Uh, with the town manager and with our friends and foundation board members. Uh, we are looking for alternate funding opportunities um with local, state, and federal grants. One of my most important goals is relationships with bo- with the boards, the trustee board, friends board, and the foundation board. Um, keeping members informed of library operations and services, staff needs. And plans for future services and activities based on library trends. And we evaluate the policies, and if any um recommendation. Made to the Board of Trustees, I would do that. Um, to get the approval of the trustees. So these are my goals for twenty twenty-one.
Looks good to me. Um, so that brings us to the next issue was the calendar, you know, we talked about last time. About shifting the calendar a bit because of, to be more coincident with um the town's calendar, and the other reason is board turns over. If you, and possibly more than one member even e- every year in May, so um, we're gonna miss you, Dean. Uh, so i- it would make, seems to me, would make more, and we agreed last time, it would make more sense to actually. Put, change the calendar rather than being January to December, something more in line with um what the town does, so. Um, you have a copy of the calendar, could we have a just quick chat about it? Now, what what's your thoughts, Priya, on how we might actually? Be adjust the calendar?
I think it makes perfect sense to me, um, having this January through December. Uh, and it aligns with uh what the town is proposing uh with the performance assessment and stuff. Um, so in January, the Personnel Subcommittee meets with the director to discuss goals. Um, February, director's goals presented and approved by the trustees. Um, and we have done that this year, the subcommittee.
This is the old calendar. We were talking last time about maybe changing it to.
Oh, I thought you.
No, that's not the, this is the old one, so that's, that's what we.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was, uh, I, uh, that you had edited this.
No, 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 I'd love to hear for discussion, and it would.
Oh, okay.
Got it too.
Okay.
What do, what do people think? Should we move this back a few months to be a little bit more consistent and? You know, I was thinking about the director's goals, uh, this is presented and approved by the trustees. I was wondering if we should do that, maybe. Let's say in uh May, when we have, you know, the new board, and so they could uh see the whole process unfold through the year.
Makes sense.
Okay.
So we could, it said, do that in May, then that before that, maybe in April, the um. Personnel Subcommittee could meet with the director. Does that make sense to them?
Yeah, I guess it does.
Now, the other thing I see here, this is, you know, there are a lot of things with. It is, this chairman meets with the director to review progress. My question on that would be, um. Would it make better sense for the Personnel Subcommittee to do that?
Yeah, I, yes.
I I have, I have a question about um. Having the new board in May go over the goals. If it's someone who's totally new to the library.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would they have enough information, you know, background information to go through the goals? Or would it be better that the current library trustees do it in April and then? Go over it again in May, in other words, so that those people who have more knowledge of. Priya and what she's done for the year, start the process and then finish it with the new board, new board members. I mean, this year it wouldn't make a difference, because there's only gonna be one new board member coming on, but.
Yeah, that can, I can see your point there, Joan.
But yet you do want the new board to be included. You want the new board member, so maybe April do a review and May finalize it.
Okay, so they would start the director, maybe start the goals in March then. Let's say, yeah, in March, we'd meet with the Subcommittee, and then in April. Um, the board, the board will um discuss them a- and.
And then may vote to approve it before it goes before the town manager, right? Because once we approve it, and then the town manager? Or is it just us?
I don't think we say, have been sending it to the town manager.
Okay, so it's just us?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, because, you know, the guy, it, it, Priya said just what they're doing for the other, you know, town employees, it's very different than the library directors. Gets quite a unique job.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I.
We could, so we could make it.
Yeah, goals, I think we can, uh, the Personnel Committee meeting with the director to discuss goals could be in March. Because um, aligns with what we're doing with the town.
Mm-hmm.
And we go uh April for um. Director's goals presented and approved by the trustees, maybe.
Okay.
And then um.
So in May, we would do what we normally do in December. A formal evaluation of the director.
Oh, I would think we wouldn't be ready, because it hasn't had a whole year yet to kind of work them out.
So, so we're not, are we not?
So maybe we just had the new trustee.
We want to avoid having an evaluation in May when there's new members.
True.
Starting on at the gate.
Yeah.
Evaluate somebody when they're starting. If they are just starting.
Yeah. Okay, so we could, we could just review them in May. I I think. Sorry, Deb, I didn't hear that.
No, no, I'm sat under.
Oh, okay. Um, it looks like, you know, the old calendar, there was a four-month, yeah, several gaps in here, so the director had some time to. You know, get some things done. I'm just, do you think the? You know, get some things done. I'm just, do you think that maybe we should have September, the Personnel Chair. Committee meets with the director to review progress instead of chairman in June?
It's funny, because this year we're dealing with, um, I'm thinking we're dealing with. Sixteen months as opposed to twelve months, and then we'll get on the twelve months. Right?
Yeah, it is, it's a funny year.
Yeah. Oh.
A transition year, right?
Contracts are funny, too.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to think, rather than having, we don't wanna do two evaluations in sixteen months, that doesn't make sense. It doesn't give Priya time to get some of the goals she set done.
Well, there's that, the, there was that interim.
Um.
Contract. In the, yeah, it, it, there was eight months before, i- and between the goals were presented and approved and. Um, that the trustees committed to, uh, you know, completed the evaluation form, so. Um, maybe the June can now switch to September, and then the Subcommittee can meet with the director, then a few more months to work on things.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, um.
I, I think if, if we just, you know, what we have here as January Personnel Subcommittee meets, we change that to March. You know, of, I've, this year.
Started, yeah, okay.
In March, I did meet with the Subcommittee to discuss goals, right? So we keep as March. Then April would be director's goals presented and approved by the trustees. May is when the chairman meets with director to review progress on goals.
Is that, no, that's not much time, Priya. There used to be a four-month gap there.
Oh, okay.
And so I'm thinking maybe September.
September, then.
And then maybe the Subcommittee, you know, so it's not just. It seems appropriate to me.
Okay, instead of chair, chairperson.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Subcommittee meets with director to review progress of goals in September.
Mm-hmm.
And then keep the rest the same.
October, November. They have a few more months before we start the direct, director's evaluation form, um. So the, I guess now we can maybe work backwards. The ends with the formal evaluation is, is the director. I guess that's in February now, right?
Okay, yeah.
And so, um, that would be February, then we would have, um, two months earlier. We have those forms, so that would be in October.
Yeah.
How does, how does that sound?
Yeah, so we would do this self, she'd do the self-evaluation in October, and then, um.
It's already in October.
No, no, um, yeah.
It would be January.
January, thank you.
No, wait. Go again, December. We work backwards.
Yes.
If the final, if the formal evaluation is February. Then we go back two months.
Yeah.
So change the current.
Trustees submit forms to chairman, reviews, so that would.
We'd have to submit them.
Be February.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be January.
January. And December is usually, um, we, when we do the budget and stuff, so maybe this could be. Done in November, trustees complete director's evaluation form.
Mm-hmm.
A, so that would be. The same, and then there'd just be a bigger gap until the formal, seems like it's. You don't want that big a gap between the forms coming in, uh, and then the formal evaluation.
Okay.
It was just a one-month gap before, so that would put it into January that we'd be submitting the forms to the chairman. And then you say maybe, you know, you're too busy in December, Priya, to do, um, the self-evaluation, or?
Oh, I, I don't mind. I mean, I can do that, um.
Okay.
Do it.
So why don't?
November or December.
Why don't we do this? How about, um, with this in mind, why don't I write out a new version of this? I've got the Word document. This is ancient into that, incidentally, it's in, it was in the legacy form of Word. Haven't used that in a while. Um, and then I can send, I'll send it to Priya first, so we can talk about it, and then send it around to everybody, and we can maybe finalize it at the next meeting?
That's good.
That sounds good, okay, because I think people raised some good points here, okay. Right, so, um, we'll work on, on that. Um, anything else on the evaluation? Okay, uh, next is Shrewsbury Public Library Foundation, anything to report there?
Um, we haven't had a meeting since our last, um, trustee board meeting, so we have nothing new to present.
Okay, um, and you've had a meeting with your two new members, haven't you?
Yes, yes, we did have a meeting with all of them, with them present too, in the, in February.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they were very engaged, and they had a lot to contribute right off the bat, so we're, we're happy about that.
That's good. Yeah, good news. Um, Shrewsbury, uh, Friends of the Library, anything there?
Um, Friends of the Library, uh, we did have a meeting the first week of, um, March. Uh, nothing, um, nothing new. I mean, um, they've, of course, been supportive of all the programs. Uh, requests that, uh, funding requests that, uh, we presented. Um, and, um, the branding project that, um, Mike and I talked about earlier, we are. Uh, I mean, the Friends are considering funding, funding that project. But I haven't presented, uh, you know, our, um, latest estimates. Uh, because we haven't yet decided which consultant we're going to go with. Um, so it may be done, maybe approved at the April meeting, or, uh. I'm not sure if they'd have, I, I would have that information ready for them, but that was something that they were considering funding.
Do you have a ballpark figure for how much branding might cost?
Around, um, four to five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, and I'll just mention that the, um, the Friends are still trying to decide. Um, when to have a book sale. Of course, there wasn't one this past year, and so they're, they talked about. You know, doing some online sort of things, and, um, other libraries have. Have been trying various things, but, so that, that's still an ongoing discussion. And I'll also just mention that the, um, the Stop and Shop Give Back Program. Um, chooses a local, uh, nonprofit every month. And so the Shrewsbury Stop and Shop, if you buy a give-back bag, you know, a reusable bag at checkout. Uh, for the month of March, which is almost over, um, the, a dollar of the proceeds. Uh, from those bags goes to the Friends of the Library. So throw away all those old icky bags that we've been using over and over again. Treat yourself to some new bags, and you'll help the Friends.
Thank you, Nancy.
And I think the membership drive is also underway, because I got something about that recently, yeah. Well, um. Anything else, Friends? Have any policies that we need to review, Priya?
Um, no, but not, not today.
Okay, and, uh, any other business, anyone? Well, our next formal meeting is scheduled for April twenty seventh, and I want to re, mind you guys, this will be my last as chair. My third year now, so this is it. We're gonna need a new chair after this year. Um, so think about it, um. And, um, i- if the other meeting we have coming up, of course, is the Finance Committee on April eighth, so, uh, may see you before the twenty-seventh anyways. So.
Dean's last, uh.
Probably next month, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna miss you, Dean.
Oh, we are. I'll miss all of you too.
Definitely.
You can still come.
Right. Be an observer, huh?
Honorary seat always.
Okay, um, so can I have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
And, um, I just raise your hands, guys, I'm not gonna do a roll call, this always passes. Okay, so, um, see you next month. Thanks, everybody.